Yeah.
I'm only glad because I didn't tell them what I was going to say.
We're going to call a special meeting for May 26, 2020 to order. Please join me in the presence.
To reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Gilkum.
Here.
Both.
Here.
Paul Seb.
Here.
We've received a lot of communications and petitions. Some of them are three pages long. I've had a lot of back and forth with council clerk here on it. If we're going to read them all, they're all in the packet. I don't want to be the one that makes the decision to not read them, but if council members want to have a vote on whether to read them or not, whether to have Mr. Toby them or not, it'd be...
Yes, the meeting's taped.
The meetings taped. Mr. Hess has them.
I think we should, so the public can hear them.
Okay. We've got to read them all.
Sorry, Tom.
That's all right. We've got six communications here. The first one is from Kyle Brandt, 1217 Teddy Avenue, Visserus. This is dated Thursday, May 21, to City Council regarding whatever support for the safer grant. Dear City Council, I am writing to the City Council today in support of the city Visserus applying for the safer grant. I believe the city Visserus should apply for the safer grant. I believe the city would be helped substantially by not only applying for the grant, but also if approved by FEMA for the grant, accepting it. From what Mayor Reeser has said in the last council meeting on May 20th, FEMA will have the safer grant again next year, and it will probably be better. How does anyone know for sure that the grant will be better, or what better will we even make? What happens if it's time next year to apply for the grant, and it is the same as it originally was this year? Roughly, there are probably about five to six firefighters that will be eligible to retire in the next three to four years. Then the city will have to try to hire firefighters to replace them. If the city accepts the grant, then those firefighters from the grant could replace those retiring and not replace the others, which would save the city some money. Maybe not all of them will retire, but probably a couple will retire. How can you expect them to safely and continuously protect the city with only three firefighters per shift? That is extremely unsafe. What happens if they get injured in a fire? How long before any help arrives? Probably at the fastest 15 minutes to call in off-duty firefighters for them to get to the station house and get their gear, and then respond to the scene and try to find the injured firefighters. According to Mr. Meyer's, the city has to decide if they are going to stay in the ambulance district by the end of this year. When Mr. Meyer's brought the idea of the contract up to Mayor Reeser, he asked, "Why don't we stay with the ambulance district instead of ending in the future to end the contract with the ambulance district?" I am not sure if this is part of the contract currently, or if they would include it in the next contract. They fee to end the contract before the end of the term of it. Something that I have not heard mentioned is the overtime that the city has to pay to firefighters currently by coming in on other shifts and being called in on their off days. I know the city has to balance its budget every year, and the layoffs are always from the safety forces. I understand that their payroll takes up a majority of the general fund, but one thing that has not been talked about is the administration taking less money for a year or two until the tax revenue comes back up. One question that Mr. Fanghauser had brought up that, to me, was not really answered was, how will the city be able to afford staying with the ambulance district when the Portsmouth ambulance company stated that the fee would double? Auditor Schiffer answered it, in my opinion, halfway. She said there would be cuts across all departments. If the city can't afford new firefighters, then how can the city afford to pay double the amount for the ambulance? To an outsider, Mayor Reeser's question very hard to not even apply for the grant. What is the big deal of at least applying for it? It wouldn't hurt anything to try. Thank you for your time, Kyle Brandt, 1217, Pave, Teddy Avenue. The second letter is from Gregory C. Hershey, President of IAF Local 1120, which is the firefighters' union. Dear City Council, once again, the IAFF Local 1120 is responding to the misinformation that the mayor is distributing to this council and the public. The mayor's inability to state the facts is staggering. I know that this is a tough decision that is being made, but I feel that if you are informed with truth, then it will make your job that much easier. The mayor stated that the ballot was 16 people. We are currently at 14, which means we would have to add six more, bringing us to 22. Facts, ordinance number 12, 2020, proposed staffing with the safer grant... Oh, I'm sorry. Let me try this again. Ordinance number 12, 2020, one fire chief, one code enforcement officer, one administrative captain, three captains, six lieutenants, 12 firefighters, for a total of 24. Proposed staffing with the safer grant, one fire chief, one chief, cover's position undetermined if this has to be filled, three captains, three lieutenants, 12 firefighters, for a total of 20. The mayor stated that the city offered shared work Ohio to the police and fire department, and both unions rejected it. Facts, one. The administration did offer a 32-hour work week to the fire department. However, he never brought that to the union. This matter was discussed with the acting chief, and he rejected it on the fact that we currently won't pay 53-hour work week before receiving overtime and no pays based off a bi-weekly salary, and this plan would not be feasible. Two. Our department is already understaffed. How can we reduce the hours worked and still provide service? It is not that we don't want to help; we just can't do it in the manner that this administration wants to do it. Three. If an employee works more than 36 hours a week, then this plan would not apply to that employee. Therefore, even if we agree, then we could not respond on a call back for emergency for need. The mayor stated that he was the only one in favor of EMS except CPT. Twremley, when he wanted to... Captain Twremley, when he wanted to bring EMS to the fire department in 2017. The future of EMS Visserus is putting it in the fire department. Even the fire department didn't speak in favor. I am in favor of this, but I think it's the wrong time. We talked about 17 members being adequate, and is only hiring one more firefighter at this time, not six. Fact, number one. The plan that he referred to in 2017 was never presented to the union. When asked for it on paper, it was stated that it was in their head, not written down. Two. Council wanted to see the plan, and it was an approve it or we will make it happen plan. This was unacceptable to council at this time. Three. The union was in favor of EMS, but we agreed with City Council on the matter. The mayor stated EMS is stable, and we have no issue with that until the end of 2021. Fact, number one. The current provider is not stable, and I hope that the information needed to prove this is made clear to City Council. CJAD, the Central Triennial District, is aware of the issues, and we feel that this is leaving our citizens at risk. The mayor, City, and I have some very, very good news that can make all this discussion mute. I was on the phone with FEMA today, asking some questions and clarification on applying for the grant. What are you planning on doing in 2021? Will you have a safer grant? Answer was yes. Not only have a safer grant, but not only will have what this year has, and it will more. So my take is as more is like 2011 and 2012, where we can bring some people back to layoffs. I think, that is, we have to wait. That seals the whole deal. I hope you see it my way. You're wasting a while... You're wasting a whole year of firefighters that could be used in 2024, so you would in effect are costing the taxpayer $600,000. Fact, number one. I called FEMA, and I was told 2021 safer grants had not been determined, and that any information on it would be purely speculation. Two. I believe standard number four passed by the House, and it may have more money for safer retention from layoff, but the Senate and President are balking at that. I think the number from Pelosi was $1 trillion. Her statement of governance and our focus for $500 million. Not sure yet how that will be broken up and how much to safer. Three. Application for a grant is not guaranteed in the board. We did not receive a grant for a new fire truck, assuming that we would receive a current grant or any other speculation. The mayor stated we wait for Dr. Kramer's report and have some town halls on city and see what the people want regarding EMS. Maybe they want this in the fire department and are willing to pay for it. Fact, number one. The mayor had seen the draft report from Dr. Kramer and referred to patient numbers when refusing the report that he asked for. Two. We would prefer to see if we can do this without needing additional tax, and this grant provides us the time to do that. A baseline of quality of service... A baseline of quality of current service would be present for them to vote for if the taxes needed. Three. We didn't have town halls the last time he wanted this. We didn't... He didn't even present a plan. The mayor stated, "Why have six firefighters just waiting around for a whole year before we actually need them?" Fact, number one. The addition would be three more firefighters added due to the current staffing levels. And two, we would use this time wisely to train them to the hazards of our town in order to provide a seamless transition. I hope this helps you make informed decisions on this matter. We look forward to serving this community as best we can. Feel free to contact me with any questions. Gregory C. Hershey, President, IAFF Local Number 20. The next letter is from William Stuckert, dated Monday, May 18, addressed to council. It is regarding the safer grant. Dear Members of the Visserus City Council, I just want to give all of you my opinion on the safer grant issue. I won't go into a lot of detail, but I think you should have as much public input as possible. I totally disagree with Mayor Reeser's reasoning for vetoing the resolution to pursue the grant. I encourage you to stand strong and unanimously vote to override Mayor Reeser's veto of Resolution 219-2020. William Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street, Visserus. The next letter is from R. Thomas Walker, President of the Visserus Patrol or Police, Number 68. It's dated May 19. It's addressed to the citizens of Visserus and City Council and the administration. Citizens of Visserus and City Council, over the past few weeks, FOP Number 68 has attempted to offer an opposing perspective... An opposing perspective on the current EMS proposal. Before Visserus Council votes tonight, we submit the following as a point of public record: only window shopping. In exchange with council, FOP Number 68 was told the safer grant application was mainly to see what the city qualifies for. We contend this is more than window shopping, otherwise tonight's vote would be unnecessary. In spite of acknowledging the economic crisis of COVID-19, some in council are attempting to manipulate the balance between our local legislative and executive branches, opting to set the dangerous precedent of legislating administrative policy, forcing our administration to sign a grant. This indicates an active pursuit of this proposal, not an assessment of its feasibility. What's the harm? A council member asked what harm this vote can do. For that answer, I would refer council members to Mayor Reeser's 2018 EMS proposal and the corresponding media coverage. At a health and safety meeting in early 2018, Councilman Myers references research and stated, "The city cannot afford to fund a city-operated ambulance through the Visserus Fire Department." Mr. Myers concluded this despite the availability of a safer grant and with BFD at a staffing level of 15 firefighters. In that same meeting, the city was debating water expansion of surrounding townships and discussed leaving the ambulance district. Councilman Shock quickly pointed out the hypocrisy of abandoning our townships with ambulance services, then asking them to play ball when it comes to expanding water distributions. On October 23, 2018, the Visserus Telegraph Forum published an article outlining the ambulance contract with our city. In the article, Councilman Myers again referenced his research and concluded it was too risky for me to think we could do this on our own, and alluded to the necessity for an additional levy. He and other council members encouraged Mayor Reeser to team up with neighboring entities in the ambulance district. So what's the harm? Some of our past leaders have repeatedly abandoned contiguous townships in an effort to negotiate compositions authority. The decision to eliminate our neighbors has resulted in animosity and distrust, which is particularly troubling when so many work in and/or pay taxes to the city of Visserus. A vote to override Mayor Reeser's veto again tells our neighbors we don't want to leave them, rendered any form of reconciliation almost impossible. I sincerely hope this is not the message we want to send. We can't wait till we run out of time. Lots of number 68 realizes EMS cannot be ignored, and we choose for having a Visserus fire. Our only stipulation has always been financial sustainability, not profit from resolvency. In an effort to gain perspective, our team has reached out to EMS and finance professionals, elected officials from across our state, as well as new public records. This information indicates there is going to be a substantial cumulative deficit after year four of this proposal, in spite of limited percent funding for the first three years. In the absence of a significant revenue increase, this undertaking will most certainly lead to fiscal emergency and/or staggering layoffs in the only other agency that shares the safety forces' budget: Visserus Police Department. Please note, I've reached out to some council members, referenced a informal conversation regarding our research, and only wanted to inquire. I'm certain council is inundated with facts, figures, budgets, and statistics. I'm also certain they want to do what's in the best interest of our community. I believe that was the reason William Kramer was hired to conduct a feasibility study regarding EMS, and also why so many of us anxiously awaited his report. The draft of Mr. Kramer's independent study was very supportive of Visserus Fire handling EMS. He rendered a glowing report of our firefighters' professionalism and their eagerness to take on this responsibility. With that said, on page 59 of his independent assessment, Mr. Kramer clearly states the following regarding the current proposal. "It will be difficult to accomplish under the current environment, primarily because of financial uncertainties. The decision may have to wait, but Visserus should not abandon this plan." Kramer, W., 2020. As indicated by Mr. Kramer, we reviewed all the information provided by Mr. Meyer's and the city administration, and the prudent option is not to pursue this now. Despite the wettiness and hyperbole, this can be done at another time. Otherwise, Mr. Kramer would not have suggested it. Time affords the city an opportunity to mend relationships with our townships and ensure the success of our EMS program. In closing, I submit we all want EMS to be handled by Visserus Fire. However, while other departments are using the safer grant to supplement existing programs, we are seeking a risky half-million-dollar project in the middle of an economic crisis. I encourage council to act with prudence and objectivity in tonight's vote and not override the mayor's veto. Sincerely, R. Thomas Walker, President, Visserus Patrol or Police, Number 68. The next letter is dated June, May 19. It is from Patty Hope, 415 West Southern Avenue, Visserus. It is addressed to council members. "Please reconsider and refrain from overriding Mayor Reeser's veto of the safer grant application. While we are experiencing sharply reduced revenues for income taxes and from state and federal resources in an uncertain future due to the COVID-19 pandemic, fiscal discipline should be your primary responsibility. Having staff now will likely lead to layoffs in three years when our city resumes full funding of six extra firefighters. Ambulance concerns should be resolved as a safety issue, and there were several options before a committee sincerely." Patty Hope, 450 West Southern Avenue. The last letter is dated Tuesday, May 19, 2020. It is addressed to Visserus City Council, with Senator Stephanie Serena, 1510 Woodland Avenue. "I am asking City Council to please vote to override Reeser's veto. Why turn down government grants that the city won't have to pay back, especially when the department is understaffed? It sounds to me like Reeser's plan is to tear apart the fire department, and this grant throws a wrench in it. If the goal is for the city to operate our own EMS, why tear apart the fire department? It makes zero sense unless his only television role is to bust up IAFF Local Number 20. Would his desire to fill the city's fire department with part-time employees increase our home insurance payments? Based on our ever-rising water bills, the subject, he doesn't care. He's so concerned about attracting new residents, but who wants to move somewhere with an understaffed and/or part-time city fire department accompanied with sky-high home insurance? That type of part-time setup might work for a percent destiny. The population of Visserus is almost double of Uppers. How does he expect that to work? He claims this grant would bring about an unfair reduction in staff to the police department, but what about the current understaffing of the fire department? That's not unfair? Suddenly, his concern is extinguished. His disdain for that needed city department is apparent, and he doesn't try to hide it." Stephanie Serena, 1510 Woodland Avenue. And we will second file all these communications.
Do we have a motion to second file?
Second.
All of the affairs, huh?
Aye.
Okay. Granting permission for visitors to speak. Does anybody want to address council? Please come to the podium and say your hand and address. Okay, Bill. Still, there are 1042 Martin Avenue. The reason I came here tonight is not so much about the safer grants, but the big picture. The safer grant, from what I understand, is three years. I don't care whether it's covered 50% the first year, 100% the first year, whatever. After three years, there's something to say to pick up the old town. We're just talking... Just talking salaries, benefits, whatever, you're probably approaching maybe close to $100,000 a person that you want to hire. If you go to hire people after three years, you're probably going to add a couple of ambulances to do that. And then if it isn't going to work out, what are you going to do with them? Those ambulances are probably going to cost maybe $150,000 to purchase in a best case. When I listened to a couple of the letters there, a lot of it is like the benefit is now with the safer grant, which it is. But we have probably at least 40% of people that are retired. They're not going to... They can't afford anything right now. They won't be able to afford it probably in more than three years. Probably the other 60% of people that are working, the great majority of them, don't work in... Or don't live in Visserus. So if they're working in Marion or Mansfield, they're paying city taxes for those city and not Visserus. We're not getting much money from that. When I was back on finance, I went down to Gag one time, because I was wondering why they were supposed to be making so much money off of their ambulance service. And I spoke with the city auditor down there, and he didn't have any. He said everything was handled by a third-party bill. I don't know how you want to handle it. You have to think about all the people and where they're going to be in three years. If they're going to be... If it's not going to work out, then what are we going to do? If you don't have the money coming in to pay this after this comes out at the end of the three years, then you can't afford to go into state of emergency. Some of the things that we have now that didn't happen in there, I don't know what the $200,000 part bonds, I don't know when they start and what they cost. The fire truck they just purchased were maybe $600,000. They're probably paying $60,000 a year for that. And the one they purchased... Or the one they replaced, they have another one probably the same year. So my question is, in the next 10 years, are there going to be another fire truck? When I was on council, when I started it out, there was $400,000, $400,000 in a fire levy. And over the period of time, it's probably almost gone. And that was maybe going $30, $50 a year, whether it's for masks, for tanks, things which they needed. So in the next, say, three, four years, if that's gone, then the city's going to have to pay for that to keep them properly operational. And I just hope... Just hope you all look past the safer grant. You can't... You can't count on... I don't know what these other townships are going to do. But the thing is, Visserus has to be able to take care of themselves and need to not depend on somebody else. And even if... Even if the outside ambulance service is increased, the fees where the citizens have to pay more for it is probably still going to be cheaper than trying to add additional people and staff on with equipment and... I don't see maybe... So that's all. I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Hershey. I'm the union president for Visserus Fire Local 1120. The overwhelming majority of people agree EMS should be provided by Visserus Fire Department. Most opposition to EMS in the fire department revolves around the number of firefighters needed to provide adequate service while adding EMS. This argument also includes funding availability and the concern for the townships. On the issue of manning, one statement is, "Why have six firefighters just waiting around for a whole year before we actually need them?" The addition would be three more firefighters added due to the current staffing levels. We use the time wisely to train them to the hazards of our town in order to provide the seamless transition. On the issue of funding, the application of the safer grant provides the opportunity to fund those needed firefighters to provide the service and offset the startup cost of running EMS. The staffing level at the fire department is lower right now than before the safety levy passed. How is that allowed to happen? Wasn't the safety levy supposed to keep both police and fire fully staffed? Full staffing at the fire department, according to the bill, is 24 members. We have never argued that we should add 24 members. We understand that this was economically not feasible. All we ever asked for was the ability to maintain staffing at the level that... At the level it was when the citizens passed the safety forces' levy. They maintained four on duty, not three, at the time, so we could adhere to the two-in-two-out rule. We agree with Dr. Kramer that EMS can generate revenue that will help cover the cost of added firefighters while removing the uncertainties included and at least doubling subsidy required by Portsmouth. Application for the grant does not guarantee the award of a grant. However, it guarantees the opportunity to consider it if awarded. The township concerns, it is our belief that you must have your own house in order before you can reach out and help others. What that look like? Could only be speculated, but we firefighters never intend to be an island. Portsmouth informed Dr. Kramer of their intention to stay in town and provide a service to the townships and non-emergency transports. We thank you for your time and effort that you put in to this, and I hope that no matter what side of the argument people stand on, they take that into consideration. In closing, the decision is yours to make, and Visserus Local 1120 will support whatever you decide. We will continue to provide the best service possible with the tools provided. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Next, we have the... Well, one of the special... One of the reasons we had special meetings, because the mayor amended the proclamation for the emergency declaration since City Hall is open back up. We have the new hours for City Hall, and the original proclamation is the next page after that. So we need to have... Council needs to have a vote on whether they're going to accept this amended proclamation.
Mr. President, do we have... This is the original, I promise, correct?
Well, I think that's the second one.
This was not the original one. This is one since we amended it on April 9.
Right.
Because of the status of our meetings, and that's what you have here.
The reason I ask is, as a reading, it says that both the police and fire departments are closed. Is the police department not... I believe that was open there.
But it says right here, police say the fire department remain open.
But... But... The next sentence is, "Both stations shall be closed to the public. If you need to speak to a police officer, call to schedule an appointment." That's why I'm just asking.
We need to change... Scratch out the sentence out there, or...
Well, I guess we need to clarify. Can you give any insight to that? Is dispatch open now? Okay. Because the one sentence in here says, "Both departments remain fully opened and staffed," but the next sentence says, "Both stations shall be closed to the public."
Even when it's all closed up, we can come back.
Okay.
And we say we're closed on all that.
Okay. They can come into the lobby in the dispatch? So I would think that sentence should be removed.
Do we want to have a vote to consider removing that... Removing that sentence about the "Both stations shall be closed to the public"?
Police department is closed from 12 to 1.
Okay. Which... They can go to the back door. That's reflected on here. Okay. On the hours. Is your station remain closed to the public, or back open? People come and ring the bell like before, or...
Okay. Well, they're still ringing the bell. They can... Yeah. Well, I'll... Help them at the front office, but...
I just... I caught that. I wonder...
Rob's going to go call the mayor right now.
It probably should say fully staffed.
I asked that to remove last time.
Thank you.
Well, my... With the way that sentence reads, with that being in there, that both the fire department and the police department remain fully staffed, the way I interpret that is, the mayor cannot do layoffs while this proclamation is in effect. So I'd like to leave that line in there.
If he argues that.
So we're going to... If he tries to do any layoffs right now, and that this proclamation's in effect, he could be violating this proclamation. But anyways, since Rob's going to clarify that, we'll just move on here on the agenda.
Sounds like he's getting the answer now. I'd rather wait. Yeah, that's all right. These are...
We'd almost have to get rid of the third paragraph, too, because that says, "All city buildings shall be closed to the general public."
Right. That's what made me think this was the original. It's not dated, so it's...
I went by the... I went by the, by number 11, which was the last one, which was April 9th regarding our public meetings. They did not issue a prospect of previous updates. The existing proclamation, they just gave them out.
The second one.
I have plus on number 12, it says the city, you start, police and fire department remain open and fully staffed, so.
But the stations are closed, because their departments are like, the stations are closed.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at to where you can't do layoffs, because that, this paragraph. We probably get rid of number 1.
Number seven and eight are also with the question now, is EMS city offices closed?
I love you.
Well, you're talking more than I am.
Yeah, that's good.
Because I was gonna miss it, but I don't like this. You know what I said about that? Still, this makes me always think.
I didn't know I saw a break in break.
Yeah, look. No, it's gonna be from the ad. Can we add that we can bring water on you also?
No, one of those things.
He said his, his intent was set to be that the lobby area shall be open. You have that lobby area, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
He said his, his, his intent was set to be that the lobby area shall be open. You have that lobby area, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
He said his, his, his intent was set to be that the lobby area shall be open. You have that lobby area, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
He said his, his, his intent was set to be that the lobby area shall be open to the public. We have the lobby downstairs and, she shrugged as well, and we have the lobby area, the fire department, we can come in and bring it up. So, his intent would be that the both stations lobby area shall be open to the public.
And while you were on the phone, Mr. Adams, we questioned number seven, eight, nine, and 11 because they're all, number seven, so this is, well, I guess number seven's okay because it doesn't say that offices closed, that encourages use of the drop box. I guess the same for number eight.
I don't know.
Looks to me like seven and eight, 10, and 11 could just be wiped out completely.
Yeah, isn't the tax office open?
Well, I, I will say, I will say this with respect to the tax office. What I think they want to try to avoid, and Gary's kind of in charge of the lobby down there now, is a mass influx, you know, where we, tax season, sometimes we have a line out the door, everybody showing to get their tax returns. So, as it's stated in here, it has the call, the kind of schedule, so I think for now, that's, that's probably okay.
Well, how many people came in today?
I'm just telling you.
How many people came in today?
Thirty-six.
Did they all come in at once?
Yeah, the way link must drop them off.
But they were banned.
No, they, they all came in different, plus there was a BZA meeting, were they too?
Okay.
So, that drew in probably an extra dozen people.
There is a line on number 11 that says public meetings will be held via telephone and video conferencing. I know that would have to...
Well, what's everybody's thoughts on just wiping out seven, eight, 10, and 11 on that side?
Well, I reread seven and eight. They don't say that those offices are closed, they're encouraging people to use other forms. So, I think that's okay.
Seven and eight are okay?
I, I think so. They're not telling you you can't come in, they're telling you.
Did you say you want to do property inspection?
We can go ahead and eliminate nine too. We've actually got a couple scheduled for, they were old combinations that have been repaired, so they're, we're actually scheduling them.
Get rid of nine, 10, and 11?
I, I almost would want to add, Mr. President, to number eight, just to let people know, like, I went to pay my taxes through the drive-through last week, and I'm not gonna hand to somebody a big amount of money without getting a receipt. They won't do receipts there, so I think it might actually, if people are still thinking the same, I think that we should put, add the appointment part to it. Like, let them know, because I was, I just waited till today, like, call in, schedule an appointment, as opposed, because I would read this and I would still think, oh, I'm not gonna pay my taxes. My daughter asked me that, and I said, well, they're open, so get up there and pay your taxes. I'm sorry.
I will say to that, though, with this being a proclamation, you know, they can put information out on the city's Facebook page and website to, you know, further spell out the different options. I think, that's just my opinion.
Okay, so nine, 10, 11, remove, and on the first page, it said both stations shall be, both stations lobby areas shall be open to the public. Is everybody okay with those things I just said? Does it have a vote on it? You gotta make a motion?
Same motion.
Second. Go up there if you do.
It was Myers. Yes. Booth. Yes. Also.
Yes.
McKeever.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Trukka.
Yes.
Yoko.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, hopefully, they can provide us with a current typed-up version of this, this Next is consideration, reconsideration of legislation 219-20-20.
Yeah, I'll just read the caption to that resolution. 219-20-20, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Desires, Ohio, on behalf of said city, apply for fiscal year 2019 staffing for adequate fire and business response safer grant under the terms set forth herein and declared in the emergency. It was passed by council on the 5th of May of this year, and was vetoed by the mayor on the 15th of May.
Is there any public participation on that legislation? Come up with a voting.
I don't know if you want to consider me public or not. Chad Schwimley, acting chief of Desires Fire Department. I apologize for me being late this evening, because the, I was at station getting ready. Engine was already out, doing some other stuff. We got put on standby for the city, 3MS. I notified the crew, they were making their way back to the station. At that time, we got called for a run. So, the other, the fire truck was directed, I directed the engine to respond to the location, and I ran a squad off to them, so that's why I'm late. I'd like to thank council for, for all their support in this matter. Us at the fire department, we have the, we have the public's best interest in mind, just like that call, the best interest and get care to that person as quickly as possible. That's, that's what we do, and that's what we, that's what we live by, and that's how we work. We wouldn't jump into this if that wasn't what the case was. We're asking to do more work. Yes, we're asking for more people, but in the end, we want to make the community and the city a better place. So, I, here for any other questions that you may have. I've actually been, talked to several of you council members throughout the past week or so, or past month, as this has been going on. I'm always here to answer your questions, and I'll do that with the best of my knowledge and, and with honesty and dignity. So, I just, again, thank you for your service, and if you have any other questions for me this evening, please feel free to ask.
No apology necessary. Thank you for doing what you did before you showed up.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. We have any other public participation? Mr. Beaver?
Just to let everybody know, this has been on my mind for the past four weeks. I'm just gonna let you tell you right now, I'm voting no. Reasons, I'm not against the fire department. I want us to have something to this effect. I cannot see us financially affording this by ourselves. First year I was voted in in council, Steve Hyfer and I, been to the mayor's office, Mr. Schwimley was in there, Mr. Keller, two gentlemen from Galleen, I don't know their names, we discussed this. I'm for an ambulance service with us providing it, but fiscally, I do not see how we can afford it right now. I understand this might be the best safer grant that may be available. Can't argue about that, but at the end of the third year, it's all in our hands. Complete, we have no, we can't go back to the safer grants and hey, well, we need more money. We might be able to, I don't know. I've never had to apply for one, but are we gonna get it? We'd say we're gonna get it the second time, if we get it the first time. I want us to do this, but I don't see, I like Greg's proposal with only three people, not six. I agree with that. I think that's a better number. I, I'm just saying, I cannot see how we can financially afford it. I'm not gonna ask you for a discussion. I'm just stating why I'm voting no. I want this, but financially, I do not see how we can afford it without enough, there's not enough information for me to say yes on the finances. I mean, look, we have to roll over a note, you know, $200,000 note, we just rolled it over. Luckily, interest rates went down, so it's not gonna cost, it costs us $5,000 to roll it over. We gotta pay for that fire truck. The firemen did due diligence to get a good deal on that. I commend, thank you. I mean, you saved us several, I don't know, how much? Probably $100,000 or more. I don't know. I don't know what the actual cost. I just can't see us going into this if we get, and going into it without finances being sustained. Half of the third year. I, I can't do it with the conscience. I've been called by a lot of people. I've been called by at least 15 people who are posted as they didn't want to come, but they expressed that to my concern. Bill was one of them. He was wanting to call. I had several others. I won't mention names, but they called, because I represent them, my phone number's available, and I'll stop there. I, I just, they are concerned about it, they want something, but they're also worried about the finances, and they adamantly said they will not vote for any tax increase to cover the deficit if we, if we have the deficit because of taking off the sanctions. They adamantly told me, and just to thank, my father has lived in Crawford County for 64 years, and he said this has been going on for 64 years of an ambulance type service between city, private, countywide, they, and 50 years ago, we had twice as much employment here, which could handle the finance better than they can now. But enough said, I just want to let, you know, I'm not against us doing this. I don't think we can do it now. That's all I have to say.
Any other council members have any discussion they'd like to discuss?
Mark, I appreciate you saying that, because I know, talking with you, that this has been weighing heavy on you over the last several weeks. I just want to, maybe let people that don't know you well enough, and that, you know, you didn't come to that decision lightly, and you, I just want to say thanks for being able to give your explanation. I would, with respect, disagree with you that, I believe that we can't afford not to do it, because of knowing what's coming down the road with, you know, the recent double time, triple, or something, rushing, if we pay more money at the end of this three-year period, if we don't do this, I mean, so that's where I come to my decision. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
I actually agree with Kevin. I really feel like it's time for us to do something. I take care of ourselves.
Like you said, your father said they've been talking about this for 64 years. You guys know where I used to work, what I used to do, and it was talked about every one of those 25 years I worked at there, and that's why, you know, I guess it's time to, time to go ahead and then, you know, plan with it.
And we still have till, we still have another decision in July on whether we're gonna accept it or not, so we're not, this is not binding us tonight to accept this grant.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something too. I know that we, financially, things are not gonna be great, but I would like to look at the positive side and look at this as giving us incentive, like, we need to get this, this is here, to pay for this, like, to, you know, put that burden on our ear. There's still, society's still gonna move on, and I'd like to look at it that way. Hopefully, in three or four years, I think maybe the annual service will be making us a little bit of money, or breaking even, where if you have that at, you have us actually starting to bring in money on...
Mark just became a grandma, sorry.
I don't know. This is kind of where I'm at. I'm glad it will bring in money.
I guess my own comment is the, we have an aging population in Desires, and there's gonna be more of a need in the upcoming years than ever before, that our residents know there's going to be a paramedic ALS ambulance service available if they were to need it. And as the fire chief, acting fire chief said tonight, there was a situation that, I don't know if their other trucks were out, or if they didn't have, right now, their trucks on duty, as they're supposed to? It's kind of been a question here the last several months.
I have a question, since you just mentioned what you did turn right here, pertaining to what you mentioned when you walked in here. What would have happened if you would have already been here?
It would have taken longer for them to respond. They would have had to, either, in the current situation, because there's only three on duty, they would have had to went back to the station and got the, got the squad and responded there, or they could have responded directly there and sat there waiting, hoping for a squad to show up.
Right.
So, those are, those are more or less sort of the two options. Last, last two weeks, we had to wait and wait for a squad to get there because ours was broke.
Thank you.
I will say too, Mr. President, that the data supports that every year over the last 10 years, going back, the run volume has steadily increased each year, and one year out of the 10, that it went backwards, and it was only by less than 100 runs. So, every year in the last 10 years, minus that one year that took a fat pedal of 10, that we've seen an increase in run volume. Even our population is decreasing, our run volume is increasing, that's what the fire department's efforts to do, to support the run volume.
Yeah, I, I think the run volume's gonna keep going up as the population base ages in this area, and is anybody else having?
Who would the billing be handled from?
Third party.
I had people asking, and I said I believed it would be a third party, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's, it's Med-Cal, and that's the, we get an annual report from them, I mean, at least monthly correspondence, but annually, there was a, they get a rundown of all the runs and stuff, that, that was actually in the back of the annual fire report.
I'd say the report you just gave.
And, and those funds will be given to the city for the general fund?
I don't know how it's set up right now. Where, where does our billing money go?
It just, it goes into a, it gets tracked as a separate line item, but to, to answer that, you'd have to ask Joyce if it goes.
We can change, I think we should change what fund that goes into. We could make a new fund that we want.
Because it needs to become self-sustaining.
It could, it could be made into a fund, just like water fund, whatever comes in from ambulance stays in a ambulance fund that cannot be diverted other than to cover the cost of ambulances or equipment for the, it can't be used elsewhere. It can't be used in the police department, can't be used in the regional.
If, if the police department, say, seizes property and they auction that, does that money go to a separate fund, law, law, to them, for them to sustain themselves?
There's, there's a separate one.
Okay. That's what I wondered, was if it all kind of works the same way.
Okay, does anybody else have any other discussion?
If I might, a few of your questions, at least, about the third-party billing. Several years ago, someone else went up to some of the surrounding area to the other fire departments, looked how they were doing EMS, and one we went to was, I believe it was Finley, talking to their chief. His explanation for using third-party billing was because to keep all the HIPAA information out of the fire department, if somebody has a billing problem, they're not calling the fire department, bringing information into, say, Chad, discussed with him, he has no regulation of that, he has no interference with that. They call the fire department, they're getting the number for Med-Cal, they're in the station.
Any other questions, comments? I'll proceed on here. The first thing we need to do is amend the original resolution. Okay, that passed, and then we need a motion to reconsider resolution 2192020 because the mayor vetoed it, we need two-thirds, which would be a five-member vote to pass.
Second.
Second.
Okay, that was Myers and Allsepp. Myers?
Yes.
Allsepp?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
McKeeber?
No.
Okay, that is six votes, and we have got the two-thirds we needed, so it passes. No council member for absence. I don't need to excuse anybody, any motion to adjourn?
Second.
All of the papers, do I?
Aye.
Did I give those? I got your folks' vote. Adjourn to 7:51.
Thank you for speaking this.
That, I guess, powder.
Listen, we're gonna need this. I need your mind to work.